Okay, has everybody made it over?
We're on here.
Tony is here.
Kevin's here.
So let's see, who we're missing?
Okay, I'm counting. We've got Andra, Bill, Linda, Kevin. We've got one, two, three, four, there's one, two, three so far. I thought I saw Tony.
I'm here.
Okay, Tony, that's five. Fred's here.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Did John Marshall make it over?
Uh, I see there's a caller, but I'm not sure if it's him yet or not.
Think I'm there.
You're there, John?
Jim.
Oh, Jim, I'm looking for John.
Right, bro.
Hi, Jim.
Hey, how you doing, Bill?
Good. We were having internet trouble the last of the public hearing. So we're making sure everybody's getting in.
Actually, this is the easiest I ever got in.
Well, it can degrade any time.
Yeah, that's right.
Mary's in now.
Okay, so the only ones here are not here are Mike Washington, who we know will be late. Okay, Tom's here now, so I think we're good to go. And with that, um, I apologize, you don't get to see my lovely face, but um, we had some issues last time, so I figured this was safer. So I'd like to call this regular Town of Ledger Town Council meeting to order. Roxanne, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Here.
Mrs. Engel?
Here.
Mr. Malone?
Here.
Mr. Marshall? I know he's on his way. Mrs. McGrattan?
Here.
Mr. Sebelia?
Here.
Mr. Som?
Here.
And Mr. Washington will be along shortly. So we've got actually seven here at the moment and two trying to join still.
Okay, are there any resident and property owners who wish to speak at this time? Uh, Mr. Mogul? Uh, you're muted, Mr. Mogul. Paul, you're muted. There you go.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I'm speaking about the proposed zoning regulations that have come out and have been very controversial, we say. I strongly suggest at this time that Ledger forego any and all new farming regulations and focus on helping the businesses that exist to become more profitable. These, in turn, these businesses will help Ledger grow. Right now, farming in Ledger is extraordinarily difficult. Then we add to it the pandemic. Uh, we can no longer sell directly as we were prior to the pandemic. Considering that others in other neighboring communities such as Stonington and North Stonington have put out expanded tax exemptions for farms, I consider that maybe that would be a more beneficial, positive, constructive step forward to help farming in Ledger, whether you're small, medium, large, it doesn't matter. It's about taxes and control. Right now, there's a tremendous, how shall I say? Resentment overwhelming, I believe of, I have enough from a lot of folks who are farming very hard here. If we could suggest, let me suggest, that you take a look at what others in North Stonington and Stonington have done, and I would suggest proposing a farmer's tax exemption for new, whether that's a tractor or whatever it is. Right now, we have $100,000 exemption based on the state uh, has established many years ago. If we were to expand that for another $100,000 deduction, it would certainly help folks see that Ledger is supporting them, not trying to regulate them out of business, which is the way it was put to me, not the way I'm putting it to you. Thank you. If you have questions, I'd be happy to ask. I don't have all the answers. I do have a proposal, and I have mentioned this to Fred and others as well, so. And I understand we are in a cash flow situation that may not allow us to do this, but it's certainly something that needs to be on, on a, on a fourth rate agenda as we put out there. People need help these days, not, not more regulations and control. Just a thought.
Thank you. I did respond to your email with your comments. You may have not have received it, but I did refer that, I did refer that idea to finance on Monday, and Roxanne has already started pooling regulations from other towns or abatements from other towns. And I believe the mayor has also asked the tax assessor to see what that would mean. So we actually have already started moving, looking into that as of Monday. Thanks, Paul. Any other?
Very constructive, very helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other residents or property owners wish to speak at this time? Seeing no waving of hands, any commission, committee, or board reports? Um, Mr. Woody, would you like to speak at this time?
Sure, I'm happy to do so. Thank you, Chairwoman Davis. So first, I have just a written statement that I'll read, and then if there are any questions from the council, I'm happy to try to answer those. Uh, two weeks ago, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public workshop on a draft proposal for agricultural use regulations. The intent of the proposal regulation is to allow a wide variety of currently unpermitted non-agricultural accessory uses on lots with legitimate agricultural uses. This draft has been met with overwhelmingly negative feedback and concern about its potential impact on existing farms in town. It was never the intention of the commission or of the draft regulation to greatly increase the bureaucracy or cost required to operate in town, nor to eliminate current legally permitted agricultural uses. Much of the blame for this concern falls squarely on the commission's failure to better communicate the draft nature of the proposal and how the regulations would work in practice for existing farms. The commission remains committed to finding a solution to make it as easy as possible to allow agritourism and agribusiness to operate in town. But at this point, I feel it's likely not possible to afford with the existing draft to accomplish this. As such, there will be no further action beyond collecting input at this time. Please note that this is not a formal action. The commission has no application had yet been made. We will continue the public workshop at our next meeting on September 10th to gather information about how to accomplish the stated goal of allowing currently unpermitted accessory uses. Finally, I ask all those interested and concerned to stay active, attend our meetings, and voice your opinion. We value need and respond to your input. In particular, the still, the town still needs a functioning agricultural commission. This commission was established several years ago to act as a voice for the agriculture community of Ledger. However, today has never had sufficient volunteers. Please consider volunteering to become a long-term part of the solution. Second, I wanted to briefly describe what the process is for a regulation amendment for the zoning commission. Because I think there's been a lot of confusion about what that actual process is. So to start off the process, a completed application for regulation amendment is given to the commission, which includes a complete list of the additions and deletions from the current regulations. Once accepted at a public meeting, a properly noticed public hearing is scheduled. Due to noticing requirements, this is typically done at the following month's meeting. The public hearing is the formal process where the commission receives comment and evidence regarding the amendment. If anything received causes the need for substantial change to the amendment, the public hearing is continued. A commission application like the draft agricultural regs is not bound by any time limits on the length of the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, the commission deliberates on the amendment and anything presented in the public hearing, and when completed, votes on the amendment. If the amendment is approved, an effective date is set for when the updated regulations actually go into effect. The public workshop held two weeks ago was a pre-application hearing, which means to say we have not even started this formal process yet. The advantage of a pre-application hearing is that it allows for an open discussion without the restrictions of a public hearing. Uh, with that, if there are questions from the council, I'll do my best to try to answer those.
Chairman Davis, if I may? Nate, um, thank you for your, for the, um, based upon some discussion, I should say, that had been floating around town that I've, I can say, partied to, but can witness to. Um, I would like to offer my services to help the zoning commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission, to move forward with the workshop, and I do intend on attending your next workshop to voice, to help, I should say. As a former chair of the zoning commission, and as also, uh, chairing several of the last reg rewrite committees, I would like to offer my services to help. To see, to get a set of regulations that meet the intent of what the town wants to do from, from, to your point, unregulated activities and also to what is, you know, what would be right for the town and the agricultural community.
Absolutely. You're obviously welcome at our meeting, and we're happy to have you there and happy to have your input.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Somes, I see your hand up.
Yeah, Chairman Woody, I also want to thank you for your note. And it was extremely well-written, very informative, and I think it helped to diffuse much of the angst that we saw in the last couple of weeks. Zoning is a very complicated matter, and Kevin, thank you for offering to step up. You've, you've got years of experience with this, as do many other people in this town who've served on the planning and the zoning commissions and the combined commission. Along those lines, experience that is, I'd like to suggest that when we stand up the ag commission, that we request that the ag commission members attend some zoning meetings and also get some training on zoning, because as I say, it's a very complicated process. It's intended to not only solve problems, it's, it's also got to be written so that it can't, the, the rules and the laws and the regulations can't be bent. And that's a huge order for any commission. So I think if the ag commission members, I know this is another task we're putting on their shoulders, and we haven't even got the commission yet, but I think it would be very helpful to the process if they were to educate themselves on, on zoning, and there are plenty of ways to do that. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Bill, Kevin. Uh, Roxanne, would you do me a favor? Could you mute a few people because there's a lot of background noise? Uh, so anybody that's not muted is going to now be muted. Um, thank you for that. Uh, and?
And John is here now, too.
Pardon me?
John Marshall has, has made it in.
Oh, okay.
End up.
Okay, yes, I can see that. Uh, thank you, Andra. Um, if I could just finish for a second. Um, because several people have mentioned the ag commission. We have had 12 applicants. Um, which is, if anything good came of all this, that certainly was it. Thank you, Mr. Woody. Uh, many of the applicants are members of the farming community, which is very positive. Uh, the downside, of course, will be only seven members will be able to, um, make it, and, um, you have the balance of minority representation. Uh, it has to be a certain members of the farming community, so there will be a balance there. And again, there's going to be at least five people that are not going to be able to be on the commission. However, we do have an opening on the Farmers Market Committee, so I am going to go back to all of those people that don't make it because it is a natural fit, so we will do that. And now, Andra, if you would like, you have some comments.
Yeah. Nate, thank you also for your comment and for, um, you know, just a thoughtful, a thoughtful response. I have a question. I'm hesitant to ask because I realize that you, I think you mentioned that, you know, you're pretty much going to be wiping the slate clean and not, not going with what had been drafted. I did want to ask really for my own edification, and probably the most, um, common frustration was the, the 100-foot setback. Uh, I'm, I'm curious to know what the, you know, what the goal is, and I realize that that regulation has actually been passed in other communities. So I, you know, to a non-farmer, I see that as rendering a huge amount of property, you know, useless. But, so if you could just help me understand what the goal there was, and because I do assume positive intent, but I couldn't get my head around what the positive intent was there.
Yeah, absolutely. So there's a couple things there. So as you say, this is a, uh, a regulation that is fairly common in the surrounding towns. Um, and so it is, it is fairly common, and the intent is essentially to make sure uh, that there is a separation between agricultural uses and residential uses so that there is no interference. Um, and so this is something, that, that sort of buffering is actually supported by several of the Connecticut Department of Agricultural Reports that have said it is important to figure out, uh, you know, how to provide that buffer so that you don't have the agricultural uses spilling onto residential uses, and you don't have residential uses negatively impacting agricultural uses. Um, I expected as part of this process, a robust debate about that specific, uh, regulation, because it is always a controversial one. Um, and so, you know, from my opinion, if we don't put that in the draft regulation, then we don't have that debate. Um, and so part of that was to make sure that we had the debate about what kind of buffering is needed uh, between livestock and agricultural uses and residential properties.
Thank you. I'll leave the rest of that discussion to the farming community, but thank you for addressing it.
Uh, thanks, Andra. Uh, John? You have to unmute yourself, please.
Hey, quick question for you. Uh, there's some existing farms in town where the edge of the pasture is literally the property line to a residential property, so how are we going to handle something like that?
Yeah, I think that that would, that would be a problem, given that regulation, and that would be something that we would have to figure out how to resolve. Um, and I think that's one of the things that I would have expected as a part of that debate, uh, on whether or not that regulation makes sense and, and whether it's something we could move forward.
Okay, anyone, anyone else without, without starting to have a workshop right here as part of our town council meeting? Uh, any other comments before I move on to, um, Mr. Vincent from EDC? Okay, Mr. Vincent, it's your show.
I hope so, if you can hear me.
Yes, I, we can. Thank you for being here.
Alrighty. Good evening. My name is John Vincent, 19 Friar Tuck Drive in Gales Ferry. I'm the chairman of the Ledger Economic Development Commission, and I'm here tonight to address, uh, I'm addressing you tonight to give you the 2019-2020 Ledger Economic Development Commission Annual Report. The Economic Development Commission's long and short-term objective is to increase the quality of life for residents while at the same time expanding the town's tax base through the diversification of business and industry in town. The commission is made up of seven members. Myself being the chairman, Richard Tashi, the vice chair, Mike Dermiller, the secretary, Carol Schneider, Jennifer Holsworth, Paul White Scarf, and Megan Reed. That are our, that's our seven volunteer members. Okay. Reported activities of things that we've gotten done this, this year. Uh, we sponsored the kids vendor table at the 2019 Farmers Market. We attended ribbon cutting ceremony for Ledger Middle School, Gallup Hill School renovation, Baker's Dozen at Gales Ferry Best Way, Jack's Cleaning Service, Spicer's Landscaping, and Boss Hair Designs. Uh, we've also coordinated the Small Business Saturday activities. As far as the marketing goes, we ran the Ledger Eats local contest from April 20th to June 28th, uh, this year. We also developed a reference guide for businesses in Ledger and Gales Ferry. It outlines the steps and contact information for starting a business in Ledger. Uh, the brochure is available on the EDC's website, and it's also at the Town Planner's Office. Some of the business changes that have taken place this year, we have some new businesses that have come in. Uh, Best Way in Ledger. Spicer's Landscaping Lawn Care actually moved from Gales Ferry up to the industrial park, so they're in there now. Simply Massage, again, is another, uh, business in the, um, industrial park, along with Gabe's Barber Shop. The Ledger School project is going on, the renovation there, and I understand that there's three tenants that are ready to move into that building as soon as the build-outs are complete. And there's actually more, more online once, uh, once the property is, the property is developed. In Gales Ferry, new, we have Baker's Dozen, that's in Gales Ferry Best Way, Boss Hair Design, Northeast Trucks Sales and Service. And we've, uh, the Gales Ferry Horticultural, uh, project up there on Route 12 has been purchased by Eagle Landscaping. So Eagle Landscaping is in that, in that vicinity now, and they're operating out of, out of that. Village Pizza has a new management, and it's going well. I've stood outside many, many times waiting to get in, so they're doing well there. We did have some closures this year. Gales Ferry Vision Center closed. Mitzi's Coffee and Crepes closed, and Citizens Bank has left. So those are kind of what's happening with the businesses. We have a lot of different ideas about developing diversification, how to bring people to town. Most of it is on hold right at the moment. And I'm, I'm hoping that that will, uh, subside pretty soon. The EDC has given its support to the town for the STEEP grant that they are applying for. So I'm, I'm hopeful that, uh, maybe we can get some of the state money for the STEEP grant to, uh, improve and enhance Ledger and Gales Ferry. As far as our planning goes, there's going to be a couple new changes taking place here with the Ledger Center School. There'll be some more business, uh, shops set up in there so that there'll be more business coming into there. Right now, those three businesses are already on the hook to come in. Uh, so we're looking for that Preston Hospital site. Hopefully, something will get done this year that, uh, that may be bringing more people to this area. So that's pretty much what we've gotten done this year. And, um, that's about it. If you have questions, though, I will try my best to answer them.
Thank you, John. Uh, does anyone have any questions? Uh, Andra?
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. Appreciate your work. Um, I'm curious to hear more about the ideas around the Yale Harvard Regatta that seems to be, um, in, to my mind, you know, a, a day, a half a day, when we see many descend upon the town for a short while and something that we could take advantage of and, and possibly marry it to some of these other things you've mentioned in your, your Business Day, Farm Day. Um, so I'm just curious to hear what some of the ideas were around that, that event.
Actually, we haven't, haven't really spoken a lot about that event due to this virus as to whether it's even going to take place. I know that, uh, you know, the, there's only a couple of boats out there, but there's a lot of people gathered. So I'm not, I'm not quite sure how we're going to address a party or a, uh, celebration of the winner. We, we, we haven't gotten there yet, has to do that.
Sure, okay, so not for this year, but maybe going forward. But, but it sounds like that hasn't been discussed that much. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Well, hearing no other questions, I bid you all a good night.
Thank, thank you for being here, John.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to comments of town councillors. Anyone have anything this evening? Nope? Uh, okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of July 22nd.
So moved, Kevin Dombrowski?
Uh, let's put them together, Kevin, if that's okay, July 22nd and August 5th.
Agreed.
Okay, is there, okay, is there a second, please?
I'll second.
John's second.
Okay, John Marshall's second. Any discussion, corrections, additions? Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Som?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan? Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion's carried. Uh, you have your communications. Uh, I did send the one, as I mentioned, the one referral to the Finance Committee in regards to the, uh, tax abatement on farm property or equipment. Uh, let's move on to liaison reports, and we will start with admin. Or subcommittee reports, admin.
This committee met, uh, August the 19th, and our recommendations are on the agenda for approval tonight.
Thank you. Any questions for admin? Oh, Finance?
Uh, Finance has met, this is Councilor Somes. Finance has met twice, I believe, since the last town council meeting. Um, everything is on the agenda. We had one item that was tabled that was since moved down at the last meeting last week, so everything is on the agenda.
Any questions for Finance? Thank you, Bill. Land use?
Uh, land use met at the beginning of the month, and the one item that we moved forward was acted on at the last town council meeting.
Thank you. Any questions for Land use? Uh, moving on, uh, any liaison reports? Just raise your hand, and we'll, uh, Bill?
Uh, WPCA met last night. They had a special meeting at 5:30 instead of the normal 7:00 PM. Um, and Groton Utilities completed their leak detection process, which helps reduce the cost of lost water. Um, and they spent about $1,500 to conduct that leak detection. Most of the leaks were small and were associated with hydrants, which is interesting. Um, sometimes the gasket in the hydrant, uh, gets crushed if it's turned off too hard. So they replace the gasket and have taken care of the leaks that they found. Past due receivables are up slightly, and the reason I'm reporting on this is because we're, we're monitoring it due to COVID pandemic. Uh, they're around 23,000 this year, which is, this month, which is about twice what it was last month, but they just keep bouncing back and forth between those two numbers. Um, there was a discussion about surplus and fund balances, and the chair will be asking the Finance Department for easy-to-read reports showing WPCA income expenses and fund balances on a monthly basis. And the reason that came up is the WPCA, as you saw in Chairman Vincent's report, that the town is, and EDC is, is looking to, uh, construct a water line and/or sewer line, there's interest in both to support Ledger Center, has been for a long time. There's interest in both to support Ledgerd Center, has been for a long time. The WPCA was looking for money to, to, uh, to invest in that or study or do what they need to make it happen. And they discovered that they have money in fund balances that's not on their municipal report. So they're interested in a better way to gain access to their finances. Finally, bids have been received for the Gallipiel Tank Demolition. It's a long outstanding project. The tank is steel, it sits on Gallipiel Road, across from Gallipiel School, and it's got to come down before it falls down. So the chair has asked the members to review all the bids prior to the next meeting and hopefully they will take action at their next meeting on that. And that's my report.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone have any questions? Any other liaison reports? Hearing none. Um, I, just a quick question. Mayor, you might know this. With the exception of Parks and Recs, any other Board or Commission meeting in person?
Cemetery Committee is considering it right now. They have a meeting coming up in October. I made the recommendation that they might want to consider a pavilion or the farmer's market building, an open air facility. But that's really it for now. I think historic did as well out in an open.
Correct.
So depending on when, I would say September and October, people can probably make it happen as long as it's not too late. I know the Cemetery Commission's meeting at 9:00 AM, so they won't have a daylight issue. But as we venture into October, that'll start becoming an issue.
Scott, how are your, how are your outdoor meetings working?
Um, we've had, only had one of them, I believe, or two. They worked out pretty well. We met on a soccer field, so there was plenty of space to spread out. It actually was good because that's what we were discussing. We're trying to meet property per, each property and come up with plans for future development. It's actually worked out quite nice. Instead of doing a tour in one night, we're just doing a different part.
Oh, that's, that's a good way to do it. That's what the Building Committee did, I think, one time. Didn't they meet at the different bill, the different schools for a while every meeting? Roxanne's nodding her head, so I do obviously remember that correctly, but it's, it's a good idea. Thanks, Scott. Okay, now I'll move on to.
No, wait, Linda?
Yes.
Hold on. The Conservation Commission met last month outdoors and the, and they're going to meet again in September outdoors at the Holdridge Pavilion. And the Housing Authority has also met outdoors and will do so for next month.
Thank you for that. Unfortunately, the town council is in a difficult situation about trying to meet in person because of the nature of the room, the nature of having to be televised or recorded. So we'll continue this way until things get a bit better and maybe the mayor has something to say about that and we'll move on to the mayor's report.
So segueing into that, I think we need to be prepared to continue our meetings possibly into December and beyond because the next thing the Department of Public Health is talking about is the flu season coming upon us as COVID is still with us. So there will be things that we're going to have to continue monitoring and, and trying to work around as best we can. We've done a good job with WebEx and we may have to continue that on this end. Where it will become more challenging is when we start getting into budget season and we're trying to meet with Finance Committee and the various department heads, but we're going to find a way to make it work. So it's just going to have to happen. Just a quick update on COVID. We're still at 40 confirmed cases in Ledgerd. That represents about two tenths of 1% of our Ledgerd population. There are three hospitalized in New London County right now, which is actually all of them that are in Eastern Connecticut as a whole. So there's no hospital stations in Wyndham County or I think even in Tolland County right now. So that part's going well. As you probably know, our Lotsit Grant for the multi-use path from the Bill Library to the high school has been submitted. We got a letter of favorable recommendation from the Council of Governments to support that. So we should be in good shape on that one. The 5310 Van Graham went through the COG regular meeting last week. It passed, so we were the third grant out of 11 applications, 10 of which were considered. So it looks like May of 2021 is when we can expect to secure a replacement van. Our steep grant for the town green improvements was submitted today. There was a two-week extension by the state. It sounds like the, the, uh, the level of interest from municipalities was pretty tepid and so they granted an extra two weeks. So we just brushed up our application, submitted a couple of letters with that of, of support and then submitted that today. So we expect that they have probably also pushed back the September 14th notice of award and they're probably going to look at doing that sometime in October. So we'll keep our, our ears out for that. FEMA reimbursement application was submitted for the COVID expenses. Huge thank you to Jim Mann. He did a very heavy lift on FEMA work and it is a very detail oriented process to, to submit for that. So we are looking at a 22,000 and change to recover from FEMA for that. And then we will be able to go to the state for an additional $8,000 to cover our $30,000 initial claim. I presented a proclamation to Xavier DeBrot. He's a young scout. He raised $1,800 for the food pantry. Just did an amazing job. So Chairwoman Davis and I presented that to him in the council chambers about a week ago. And I think the young man was very pleased with that and we're very pleased with what he was able to do for the town as a whole. The state is now requiring all municipalities to have a drought coordinator. Because I've, I've, I don't think Jim Mann can wear any additional hats. I appointed myself for the drought coordinator because I think he's, he's got enough going on. So our first, our first communication came down from the state today, which is kind of amazing to me. But they're saying, oh, we're in a mild drought. Well, I don't think we needed the state to tell us that. I think that anybody who wants to go stick a shovel in the ground at their yard and, and come up with Sahara Desert type of soil will know that we're kind of in a drought right now. But that's progressing, so we'll see how, where that goes. Census 2020, Ledgerd's at 78.5% for a response rate right now, which is excellent. That closes on September 30th. My, my kind of internal goal for Ledgerd was 85%, so I hope that we'll get there. We're already well beyond what our 2010 census response was, 74.1%. Just to put it in perspective, Connecticut is the 11th best out of the 50 states for response levels. And Tolland, the, the town of Tolland is the single best municipality right now at 83.8%. And bringing up the rear end of that is Hartford at 46.4%. When they don't respond, it's awfully hard to get the federal dollars back into these cities. So hopefully they're going to be able to do something about that. Police Department, we have a number of people that are moving around. We, we, we had one that's going to be leaving law enforcement. We had a lateral move. We have a retirement that is pending for mid-September. We are advertising for lateral moves right now. I think we've been doing that for about two weeks now. And I think we only have at this point maybe one application. So not, not what we've experienced in the past in terms of response levels, but I believe that that's where we are and if it's different, I will let you know. Also, Deep reached out to me regarding a municipal waste initiative. So a couple of things are going on. The Mira Trash-to-Energy Plant up in Hartford is on its last leg. And there is another trash-to-energy facility that is also already closed. And at this point, Connecticut is shipping out like 4,000 or 400,000 tons of garbage annually. And the cost is just growing exponentially. So I'm one of 39 municipal leaders that's on this, this group to come up with a plan for solid waste going forward. It's going to involve how we deal with organics. It's going to, again, talk about pay as you throw. It's going to explore removing old used textiles from the trash streams. So stuff that's not goodwill quality, but it is also can be, you know, rendered into some other product. It's going to talk about functions that should be, should or shouldn't be occurring at transfer stations. And last of all, trash-to-energy plants. And then the, the last thing is that American Ambulance has provided, once again, their annual report. I'm not going to steal their thunder because they're going to be reporting to you at the next town council meeting. I will just say this, that they had 985 calls last calendar year. The average response time was eight minutes and nine seconds and they had zero missed calls. So once again, American Ambulance has done very, very well for the town of Ledgerd and our residents. And that's all I have for you.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to mention, you talked, you talked about meeting, meeting locations, et cetera. And I wanted to mention that the Poll Barn is turning out to be a popular place. Everybody is just amazed when they go down there and look at it. The RTC met there last month and it was really a nice spot. And the added bonus down there is actually very cool, even on a very, very hot night. I ran into the head of the Lions and he, he has, he was looking around. He was there to buy lobster rolls. And he was amazed and he is looking to perhaps, perhaps doing something there as well. So good, good location. And also, um, let's see, I was going to mention, you mentioned COVID. You mentioned the flu, but you skipped the triple E disease, EEE. I'm not sure how it's, what the terminology is, but what's the deal on that?
Yeah. So on, on triple E right now, they have, they have captured mosquitoes in East Haddon, I believe it was, or Hampton, and Stonington. The good news so far is that the mosquitoes that have been captured are, so far, are bird biting mosquitoes. They are not human biting mosquitoes. Now, the last year when we had the triple E situation, it started the same way. The season started the same way with the bird biting mosquitoes first, followed by human biting mosquitoes. So Ledge Lake continues to trap. I suspect that this coming Friday, they will have an update on the trap findings to see if there's anything else. But there was one reported human case of triple E in Connecticut already this year, which was in Waterbury. And the, the scariest part about triple E is that the mortality rate is 35%. So it is, it is a very catastrophic disease to get. And people that do get it, that do survive are often severely disabled in terms of dysfunction and motor skills. So it's a, it's a, it's a frightening disease. We'll have to keep an eye on it and we're, we're definitely into the, uh, the hot season for mosquitoes. I think we're fortunate that it is kind of as dry as it is right now because there's a lot of places that mosquitoes would breed that they are not breeding right now because it's bone dry. So, but that's where we are with that right now.
Okay, thank you. The only other thing I would mention is that the young man that raised the $1,800 did it by sewing masks. So quite an effort for a young man behind a sewing machine. Any other questions for the mayor? Hearing none. I don't see any hands. Welcome, Mr. Washington. Since, uh, since we did the committee liaison reports, perhaps you would report on the meeting you just came from?
Yes, the Diversity and Inclusion Committee meeting with the Board of Education went very well. It was a, they're in the same situation we are as far as the, our, our committee in trying to gather information, figure out the best ways to gather that information. Looking at doing, I won't call them workshops, but small group gatherings possibly to pull in the information and then take that information and figure out what best to attack first. They looked at starting at the younger ages and moving up through the system, but it's, it's a process. It was, it was a, it was around hour and a half long, round robin type of discussion with lots of arms and tentacles. I'll say that. And we were planning to meet monthly. We were putting together a schedule, putting together a mission statement. And there was some discussion about potential, a little bit more growth in the size of the committee. But like any committee, if it gets too big, it's not manageable, but that's all things that are under discussion. It was their first meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Washington? Since he's fresh from the meeting. Okay, uh, let's see. We have no old business. Would anybody like to amend the agenda under new business? Hearing none. We'll move on to Administration Committee. Mrs. McGrattan?
To adopt an ordinance regarding control of dogs in parks and recreation areas, school property and the historic district as contained in the draft dated August the 5th, 2020.
Is there a second? Okay, Mrs. Engle seconded that. Discussion?
Okay. The purpose of the ordinance is to provide regulations regarding the control and leashing of dogs or other domestic animals for the safety and welfare. And again, it's on all public lands, including sidewalk, streets, park, beach, field, and other recreation areas under the control of the Department, Ledger Department of Parks and Rec and the Ledger Board of Education or any historic district property under the control of the Historic District Commission. The, it also, it does not, uh, it requires that a dog's owner or keeper must not allow their dog to roam on another person's land or on a public highway. Owners are required to keep their dog or domestic animal on a leash at all times while on public lands and ensure the dog does not roam unrestrained. Leashes shall be no longer than 10 feet in length. And also the owner would be liable for any damage to either body, to the body of or property of any person or other animal. The Conservation Commission is going to propose a list of properties under their administrative control for leash-free areas and the rules for properties to be, and they will be presented to the town council for approval. The list of leash-free areas and rules may be amended from time to time and is hereby incorporated in this ordinance. A copy of the approved leash-free areas and rules shall be filed with the town clerk. Violating this ordinance is an infraction punishable by a fine of $92. The mayor and the animal, excuse me, the police department or the animal control officer shall be empowered to take enforcement action authorized by this ordinance. I think that sums it up. And we had heard from Chief Rich and Nate Woody and we took their concerns into account. That's all.
Are there any, and we did have the public hearing last, last meeting or last month?
We had, we had a, a meeting last month and I think it was referred back to us again after some public comments. And I think the public hearing was way, way back.
Well, that's right. It was way, way back. Thank you. Any questions for Mary? Hearing none. Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Miss Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Engle?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries and now we have a few. Motion carries, and now we have a few appointments to make? If you would?
I move to appoint Jennifer Line Weaver, unaffiliated of Twenty-Five Hillcrest Avenue, to the Board of Assessment Appeals as a regular member to complete a four-year term ending December the fifth, 2023, filling a vacancy left by Mrs. Kelly.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Mrs. Kelly is now on the Board of Education, so that's created the vacancy. Anything else, Ms. McGrath?
Yeah, Jennifer Line Weaver was a, is probably still is, a Connecticut Certified Municipal Assessor, has a CCMA designation, and has worked in the assessment field for sixteen years. That's all.
That's quite an impressive resume for the Board of Assessment Appeals. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Washington? Mr. Washington?
Yes.
I think, okay, there you go. Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Engle?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Saum?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries, next appointment?
I move to appoint David Nelson, Republican, Twenty-Five Hyde Park Drive, to the Board of Assessment Appeals as an alternate member for a four-year term ending August the twenty-sixth, 2024, in accordance with Chapter Four, Section Six of the Town Charter. Mr. Nelson is retired from the U.S. Navy and is employed by the State of Connecticut Military Division. He expressed an interest in serving on the Board of Assessment Appeals and Parks and Recreation. He has been endorsed by the Republican Town Committee as an alternate.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Engle?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Saum?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Let's see, next appointment?
I move to appoint Roger Cotting, Republican, Thirteen Hemlock Circle, to the Retirement Board as an alternate member for a three-year term ending August the twenty-sixth, 2023. Mr. Cotting is a principal engineer at Electric Boat. He currently serves as the Chair of the Board of Assessment Appeals. He has been attending the old Pension Board, now Retiring Board, since April. Amendments to the ordinance establishing a retirement plan now calls for two alternates in addition to five regular.
Thank you. Any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Engle?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Saum?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries, moving on to Finance.
This is Counselor Saum. I move to approve a proposed authorization, authorizing resolution of the Ledger Town Council, State of Connecticut, Department of Emergency Services, and Public Protection Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security as contained in the draft dated August sixth, 2020.
Counselor Malone, seconds.
Discussion, please?
So this is something that we do every year. This is the item that the Finance Committee tabled at the last meeting, at the former meeting because we had some questions that, that we needed to get clarification on whose salary this supports and also the name of the authorizing, or the supporting agency. These funds are used to support part of the salary of the Director of Emergency Management. We got the answers we were looking for. And I should also mention, I was not present at the last twenty committee meeting, so I want to thank Counselors Malone and Engels for handling the meeting and moving this one forward.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Counselor Saum? Hearing none, Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Engle?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall? Mr. Marshall? No, he's here.
Yes.
Oh, there you are.
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Saum?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries, next item?
I move to grant a, I move to grant a bid waiver to Groton Utilities in the amount of up to twenty-five thousand dollars for the installation of the Judge Crandall water line.
Second?
Counselor Malone, seconds.
Thank you. Discussion?
So this is a problem that we've had ongoing for a number of years. We had a major leak at the Judge Crandall Field. I'm going to say, I don't remember the exact year, but it was, I remember it was the year that Superintendent Hartling joined the town and the Board of Ed. There have actually been two leaks in that water line. It's a plastic line. And we have secured funding through Parks and Rec. And since Groton Utilities is the town's water operations supplier, and they, they do the construction on our water lines and the water system, we're asking for a bid waiver to allow them to do this. There were comments at the Finance Committee that Groton Utilities has been a reliable provider. They're always reasonable in their bids. So for that reason, we're asking for the bid waiver and Finance Committee supports the request.
Any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Saum?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Engle?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries, next item?
I move to grant a bid waiver to R.A. Novia and Associates LLC for HVAC equipment for the renovation of the HVAC system at the Bill Library in the amount of thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars.
Counselor Malone, seconds.
Discussion?
So this is one of those projects that's been on Public Works' agenda and, and punch list, if you will, for years. The heating and air conditioning system at the Bill Library has been on its last legs for, I'm going to say, we've, we've been talking about this in finance, I think, four years. The request for the bid waiver is actually for twenty-five percent of the total project cost. And the reason Public Works is asking for a bid waiver is that they've hired a contracting firm, an engineering firm, if you will, under a state bid contract. And this engineering firm has designed the system and specked out the equipment that they need. And rather than go through another bid process, which would cost us money because we'd have to have them manage the bid, go out three bids, go out and get three bids for this part of the project. And considering since it's already bid under a state contract, we're again requesting a bid waiver for this part of the project. It's just the equipment that goes, that's being installed to replace the existing boiler and HVAC system. And again, it's, it's twenty-five percent of the total cost of the project.
Thank you. Any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Saum?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Engle?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries, next item?
I move to authorize the carryover of eleven hundred and fifty-seven dollars in account one zero one one zero three one one dash five six one three five, Town Clerk election supplies from fiscal year twenty to fiscal year twenty-one to pay for primary election ballots originally budgeted in fiscal year twenty due to the postponement of the primary election to fiscal year twenty-one.
Counselor Malone, seconds.
Discussion?
So as, as the motion says, we would have spent this money last year, but due to the pandemic, the primary was postponed. So the money was actually spent in fiscal year twenty-one, so we just have to catch up the accounting to move it to the twenty-one budget.
Thank you. No further questions. Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Saum?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Engle?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
And Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries, one final item. Mr. Saum?
I move to approve one tax refund in the amount of three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars, seventy-two cents that exceeds the twenty-four hundred dollars in accordance with the Tax Collector Departmental Procedures.
Counselor Malone, seconds.
Seconded, any discussion, yes?
Thank you. So this is something that comes to us periodically. Typically, the mayor signs off his, his signatory authorization is up to twenty-four hundred dollars. Anything over that amount has to be reviewed and approved by the town council. Typically, these overpayments happen when the property owner and the mortgage holder pays the tax, so it's paid twice, and then we have to refund them. And, and typically also, the tax collector discovers it and reports it to the, to the property owner. So this has been recommended by the Tax Collector, reviewed by Finance, and we recommend that it be approved by Council.
Thank you, Mr. Saum. Any further discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Saum?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Engle?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. And with that, our business is concluded. I will see you in September. I would love to have sung that. If I had a nice voice, I would have, would have sung it. And instead, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made, and seconded, please?
I'll second, Kevin Dombrowski.
Motion's been made and seconded. This meeting is adjourned without exception. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Night, everyone.
Bill, the, everything went a little better as we got later.
Yeah.
Which is kind of interesting because